Now we need to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting held on July 10. Meetings were put in the packet prior to tonight, so the board had time to review them. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Second, Mr. Hart. Any discussion? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, the motion is approved or passed to approve the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting for July 10. Now, I'll do my real quick report. It will take less than five minutes, but there's lots of fun items on it. First of all, today was the first day of school for a lot of us, so please pay attention to your driving skills. Slow down. Make sure you watch for children to be crossing in school zones and in the school districts. It's easy to forget that, but that day was the day. During July, I held 19 individual department head meetings and seven town hall meetings. I considered all of these interactions great successes, and I believe we can now move forward, better equipped with information and good intentions. We'll repeat this process again in 2026. The community survey ended last week, and we already have the results. The questions asked residents what they consider... What they can... I just died, sorry. My microphone just died for a second, sorry. The questions on the survey asked the residents what they consider strengths and weaknesses regarding the county services. Other responses centered around how to spend new sales tax revenue and potential projects that the county should consider investing in. The most popular responses for concerns were property taxes and improving the county roads. And, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Receiving... Those received the most responses, but we invite you to go and look at the data yourself. You can slice and dice the data in multiple ways, like filtering age, filtering gender, filtering demographics, where people live. It's very interesting how you can move the data around to see who answered what. It doesn't have names on it, of course, but you have to go to walkercountyga.gov, which is our website, and put in the word "survey," and it'll take you right to it. And you see all the pretty pictures. We are excited to share the pilgrims' announcement. The pilgrims' plant is being... will be constructed in the Noble Industrial Park. It is a state-of-the-art packaging plant. The major... This major project represents a $400 million investment and is expected to bring approximately 630 new jobs to Walker County. Pilgrims will be participating in the... in a payment-in-lie-of-taxes program. It's also called PILOT through the Economic Development Authority. This is a common incentive used across Georgia to encourage economic growth and investment. Under this program, the company will pay a gradual increasing percentage of their property taxes over 10 years. The first year of operation, the company will pay 10% of their property tax. The second year, they will pay 20% of their property tax. The third year, the 30%, and so on, until they reach 10 years and 100% of their sales tax... Oh, property tax, sorry. Importantly, though, the school tax portion is excluded from the PILOT, which means pilgrims will pay 100% of their school tax, right? The very moment the facility becomes operational. This is their commitment to education and the community investment. That was their choice. The... One more thing about that. The Economic Development Authority without the county will be responsible for assisting with the construction of the road and getting the sewer to the property boundary. All other utilities and paving will be the responsibility of the company. This development is a major win for Walker County, and we look forward to the positive impact it will bring to our local economy and workforce. We're pleased to welcome new employee, Mr. Justin Luce. Justin, would you stand up for us?
Sorry to embarrass you.
We're glad that you're here to be our new fleet director. He will oversee the current staff, county equipment and vehicle maintenance, fleet insurance, inventory, and asset management. It will start on Monday, August 11. Welcome.
Thank you.
We continue to install upgraded technology like we are using tonight. Cameras at places, security, software, and computers, et cetera. These enhancements raise the service levels in accuracy, efficiency, effectiveness, and safety for the public and for our workers. Lastly, a brief update for our efforts to address blighted structures and other property violations. Director John Persley will provide more detail about his department later, but I wanted to say that the pallet issue on Highway 341 is a big deal, and it is being aggressively addressed daily, weekly, monthly. We're not letting it go. The... With the coordination of the Georgia Department of Transportation, they are a critical piece of this because that is their road, and they need to ensure the safety and security of everyone who travels that corridor. As for the properties owned by the pallet business, our code enforcement team is actively issuing citations and appearing in court as needed. We are committed to ensuring this issue does not continue to pose a safety risk, remain to be an eyesore in the community, and remain a hazard to the public. So I just wanted to make sure that that gets said because that's a very big, big effort that's happening, and it seems like it's taking forever, but there's a lot of legal hoops we have to jump through. But we're making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's to address that problem. And that's all I have. Financial report. I'm going to invite Christian Roach, our CFO, to the podium, and he's got a presentation for us.
Perfect, thank you. So I'm going to be doing the financial presentation for April through June, so that's three months. It's our third quarter in the fiscal year. First, we will start with April. So April, as of April, in this fiscal year, we have received revenue equalling 28.49 million, which is 82% of our yearly expectation. As of April 2025, in this fiscal year, we have spent 21.98 million, which is 63% of our yearly expectation. Our target for April was 58.33%. The reasoning for the expenditures being a little bit over. What we are targeting is the... There was a project with the Water Authority authorized back in 2024 that was for us. We were going to spend ARPA money, but ARPA kind of ran out of money, so we had to spend the general fund money. So that'll be... That'll be noted throughout the entire rest of the year. And now we will go to May. So May, target usage is 67%. And as of May 2025, in the fiscal year, we have received revenue equalling 30.16 million, which is 87% of yearly expectations. And as of May, in this fiscal year, we have spent 24.55 million, which is 71% of yearly expectations. And then we will go to June. Sounds like it's raining pretty hard.
It does, it is.
So the target for June is 75%. We're getting a lot closer to target with year-to-date expenditures. So as of June 2025, in this fiscal year, we have received revenue equalling 28 point... I'm sorry, 30.99 percent or million, which is 89% of yearly expectations. So far, as of June 2025, in this fiscal year, we have spent 27.19 million, which is 78% of yearly expectations. And now we'll go to a quarter wrap-up. So revenue, we had 5.05 million. Revenue is lower than expenditures because we collect property tax on the front end. We collect that in October, so that's our first quarter. Revenue is a lot higher there, and it kind of staggers. Expenditures are 8.15 million. Through my financial report, you can see that the main drivers of cost were public safety, infrastructure, and core government activities. So these financial reports are showing that the county is investing in public safety, infrastructure, and county services. As a conclusion to my... To the final... Or the third quarter financials, the county is on track to meet annual expectations for expenditures, and we will possibly exceed revenue for the end of the year of our expectations. Now we're going to cover some hotel motel and alcohol tax revenue. I know it's kind of a hot topic. We want to have it... It has increased significantly over the last year. So last year, we collected about 441,000. As of June 2025 in the fiscal year, so far, we've collected 1.03 million. So it's about a $600,000 increase in hotel motel tax. And that's... The majority of that is probably from the Macklemore Resort. Alcohol and beverage tax, it's about 12,000 less than last year. I'll have for that. And that is the end of my financial presentation. I kind of went through it a little fast, sorry about that, but...
It's okay.
Y'all have any questions?
Very good job. Good, I'm going.
Thank you, Christian. We don't have any committee reports, so I'll go ahead and ask Sarah Kruger from our Civic Center to come up and do her presentation. Let's give Christian just a second to get the computer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're sharing. He's going to have your presentation on the screen, so everybody can see it.
It is on the...
I'm Sarah Kruger.
Hi.
I'm over at the Walker County Civic Center in Rossville. So the... I guess I can just kind of update on what we've been doing around our campuses, but the Walker County Civic Center campus. If you'll go to the next slide.
Yeah.
Of course, we have multiple offices there as well as us and our rentals, but Economic Development, Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority, the Chamber, DCA, Shouseport, 911 Center, they're all on our campus. So we help work with each of those facilities, maintain and clean that kind of stuff. So we're a pretty busy campus, but if you look at our numbers for our events over the last few years, we have steadily increased. Last year was reaching 399 events on our campus. That's with the Civic Center and the Ag Center and the Pavilion Rentals. So this year, we are already at 200... Or 363 events. So we're targeted to reach or exceed that from last year. Based on our data from August to December last year, we booked almost 100 events, and so I see that we'll do that or more this year. So, you know, at the Civic Center, not everyone knows what we do there, but we have lots of things besides just meetings. But we have productions, plays, recitals, parties, formal dances, awards. Of course, you see the parties down there. One of those is our senior event that we have that Judge Thompson and Judge Anderson are... You know, of course, with the stalls, there's... It's just... It's a great, great event. So that's one of our big ones, but we have lots of them all year long, obviously. But that's just kind of example of what we do at Civic Center Campus. The next slide. We have our pavilion that has been updated a little bit. And of course, our new playground was put in last year, and we are almost done with the next phase. So we are super excited. Hopefully, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting at some point soon. As you can see on the pictures there, they've got all the structures put in, and they're just waiting to do the top surface. So we're really excited about that. All the kids are very excited. They anticipate, you know, they keep asking when it's going to be open. So we'll be open soon. We're really excited about that. And then the next one is the Ag Center that we ran. And of course, we have lots of different events there, lots of ag events with our schools, FFA, 4H, young authors... I'm sorry, young farmers. So... And then along with that, we have our farmer's market there. But we also have lots of other events. The community rents it out for parties or whatever weddings. We have all kinds of stuff there. So very busy facility, and we're really excited about some upgrades that we're doing there as well. And then... So this slide just talked about the farmer's market that we just wrapped up our season. We had 10 markets. We are really excited about it. We have... We have a lot of growth, about average of five more vendors than we had last year. So that is a huge improvement for us being on a Wednesday. And then our customers, as you can see, we've increased that as well, our average. Really, really excited. All of our vendors are really, really excited. They did really well this year, and we're excited about a couple of our seasonal markets coming up in October and November. So we... Just to note too, we were able to accept SNAP and Fresh for Lefts. We approved for that, so we get to double, and we distributed over 400 tokens this year. So that's really exciting, yeah. And then, of course, we have our walking trail, which is also about to be renovated this fall. So that's going to be a great... For our community, right now, it's a little rough, and we can try to maintain it, but we'll get that resurfaced, and it'll be a great fitness place. We have all different ages of people that come out there and walk, and this is going to be a really, really great improvement for our campus. And then, of course, we have pickle courts coming, so we're super excited about that and about the community as well. And we're about to... We should be doing some groundbreaking this month, so. And then we have our Rossville campus. It is new to us as hosting it and renting it, but we've already had 112 events this year. Don't really have, you know, numbers to kind of go where we're from because it's new. So I think that it's good, and we're working with some community groups about getting some of their sports back into the facility as well. So really excited about that. And then the last would be the Adventure Acres. So we're working on that as well, and hopefully, we'll have that open this year, maybe, but...
Yeah, let's just say the end before they end here.
Yeah, yeah. The splash pad may not be till next spring, but we're really excited. The community is really excited, and we have lots of great things between the Community Center and the Adventure Acres for Rossville now with our spaces we can run over at Rossville, so.
Well, thank you. Does the board have any questions for me, Ms. Kruger? Thank you for the numbers. Very impressive value there. Thank you. Now I'd like to invite John Persley, Director of Code Enforcement and Planning and... No, what is it? What's it called?
Planning, zoning, building.
Is it planning and zoning? I'm sorry to say it, it was not coming out right. Sorry, John.
That's okay.
You can repeat your name and your title.
I'm John Persley. I'm the Director of Planning, Zoning, Building Inspections, and Code Enforcement.
Thank you. In stormwater sometimes.
In stormwater, yeah. Stormwater falls underneath planning as well. So we'll speak about the code enforcement department tonight and kind of what we've been doing since January. And keep in mind, since January, we've had to hire new staff, get them trained, credentialed. I'm proud to say that they're all credentialed and trained up, so now we're fully rolling. Added another officer in the budget, so in September, I plan on starting to look for someone and hopefully hire them in October and then have the ball rolling in that department. But since January, we've had 455 new cases, people calling complaint-based. And then we've had an additional 135 that we've found while investigating these cases. We've had 1,611 field inspections, site visits to follow up. We're averaging around 33 citations monthly. When you say that's around 33 a month, we work with Alex in the court system. So we've had P-52s, which has been a tremendous help cleaning up properties. They've cleaned up nine properties total. We have three on the schedule, probably going to get to them first of September. They're a little backed up. They help other communities as well. And so we've had 46 properties getting to compliance fully, and 54 of those are currently... We're currently working with them as well to get into compliance. If someone is starting on their projects and the cleanup process, of course, we work with them. You know, our goal is not to cite them, go to court. Our goal is just compliance. We just want the community to know that if they get it cleaned up, we'll work with that as long as they're making an effort to do so. And so that's where we're at. As far as the blighted structures, that's definitely something we've been on as well, trying to streamline that process. It's very difficult due to the fact that most of these properties, they've never been probated. So deceased family members have handed them down, and so that process is lengthy, but we are addressing them, currently working with your staff as well and the court system to try to spearhead something to move that forward faster. And as far as the pallet shop, the notorious pallet shop, GDOT is currently doing a survey. Their crew has been out there over the last few days to survey the right-of-way. We're working with them, and we're going to tackle that project as a team effort. We're just waiting on their survey to get back. Unfortunately, the owner has failed to comply. He's been cited numerous times, and he's just not moving forward. So we've tried that angle, and it's not working, so we're going to address it further in a different angle, working with GDOT.
That's great news. Does the board have any questions for John? We appreciate the work that all of your staff does in all your departments and the dedication that you show to our citizens, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, we will then move to public hearing for our fiscal year 2026 budget. This is where anyone in the audience can come to the podium and have a moment in front of the board. So would anybody like to come and talk about the fiscal year 2020 budget, 2026 budget? This is not the public comment section. That comes later. This is about the budget, but you're welcome to come and speak if you... Nobody wants to speak about the budget? Okay, nobody? Before I move on? All right. Then moving on to the public hearing for planning and zoning. Jeff Tucker requests a rezone from R3 residential to C1 commercial for property located at 1423 Happy Valley Road, Rossville, Georgia 30741. Is Mr. Tucker here? Would you like to address the board? You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Yeah, I'm just a small business owner, and we're just trying to find another location, a permanent location, and this is just something that we're not wanting permanently. Just something that we can move some of our equipment over to this site. My grandkids live there, my daughter-in-law and my son live there, so it's nothing permanent. We're just wanting to be able to move our... Some of our equipment around temporarily until we find a permanent place.
It's my understanding that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with some conditions. They approved it if you moved your... Changed it from C1 to CN, which is...
Yeah.
Neighborhood review and agreement with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't know nothing about it at the time, and they told me about it. I was... That's... Sounded like more of what we was wanting anyway.
Okay, all right, good. Well, that's... Is that all you wanted to say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for being here. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to... Opposition to Mr. Tucker's request? No? Okay, then we'll move on then. The vote will happen a little bit later, Mr. Tucker. Thank you, sorry. So we're moving on to unfinished business, which is Mr. Paul Limming requested a variance for less than five acres in a A1 agriculture zone for property located at Zero Old Mineral Springs Road, Lafayette Door, the 30728. Is Mr. Limming here by chance? He didn't happen to be here, but... Okay. Mr. Limming is... Has requested that we table this until September, so I just need to know from the board, is there a motion on that request, please?
Motion to table until September.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Is there a second to that? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any discussion about this? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, it is so moved that Mr. Limming's request will be tabled until the September board meeting. Thank you. Now we do move to the public comment section. So this is again where the public is invited to come to the podium and speak on any subject that they are interested in. It is first come, first served, so whoever wants to come first. Mr. Pope has his hand up, so come on up. You know, we have... We give you five minutes, and again, you can talk on any subject that you'd like.
I'm Jim Pope, and I just wanted to review some things about the Taste Bloss vote. Brian, when was that last Taste Bloss? Was it a year or so ago?
It was a six-year... Was it? Well, it was in place with the... Oh, that's...
Well, I'm talking about the last vote, and there was a renewal vote.
Yeah, yeah, it was...
Well, that's... Yeah, it's not that important, but the purpose, well, it seemed like the general views of all of the commissioners and other top county officials were really strongly supporting it. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you supported it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I was too, and I voted for it, and I spoke highly of it when it was going on. Now, you might get it mixed in with some other funds, property tax funds and everything, but the general view message of the Taste Bloss was pass it, raise the sales tax by 1%, and then the county can give you better roads. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct. Those funds are collected and put into a fund with our CFO. We only use for no project.
Okay, so people went out, took what you always say, and had confidence in you that you would provide us better roads. And since then, they're having to go out every time they go shopping. Don't they have to pay 1% tax for the road purposes to improve roads? That's right, okay. Then, the people of our Eastermerchi community are puzzled. Hey, we were expecting better roads, but now then, this issue has come up in which we may lose ground instead of getting better roads. And we need commissioners to stand up and support better roads. That's why we voted for Taste Bloss. And but you sat here at the last meeting in that position, and you refused to say you would vote for keeping the Concord Road and Eastermerchi open. Is that correct?
That's partially correct. To make it fully correct, what I like to say is that I was asked about that, and I stated that I have relatives on both sides of this. In other words, on one side of this, I have my second cousins, your first cousins, who have requested the road be closed through Mr. Wise and have bought the old shanty. On the other side, I'm going to have my favorite uncle, you, Mr. Pope, who want to keep the road open. Now, I understand that, but what I want to point out is, is that about two years ago, we had a vote on Highway 151 in Nellie where Mr. Blackmore's uncle or cousin wanted to open the garage, correct? Mr. Blackmore stands that vote because Mr. Blackmore had relatives involved in this. Another example would be when we voted for...
Hey, Brian.
You asked me a question, I'll answer.
When you voted...
When we voted for the funds to purchase right-of-way on Eastermerchi Road, I abstained from that because I have my mother and I, your sister and I, on probably on one side of the bridge. My second cousins, your first cousins, on probably on the other side of the bridge. So I abstained from that because I have relatives involved in this. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, not a chairperson. When we get in this situation, they're taking their time up. Can we get an extension on it?
I stop it. I disstop it.
I'll answer your question.
I stop it.
Yeah, well, my question is if the commissioners are not going to stand up consistently for better roads in community, the next time Taste Bloss comes up, how is the public going to have confidence and want to vote for Taste Bloss? If we vote for it, and then we get a commissioner that's reneging and not going to vote for it, isn't that going to destroy the public comments and the county government?
So on Taste Bloss, what happens every time... We've done it twice now. And every time we talk about Taste Bloss, our road superintendent, Carter Bowers, I don't know if Carter's here. Carter comes to each district commissioner, and we look at every... Not every road. We know the part of roads in our district because all year, we kind of make a list of them. And we prioritize those roads based on what needs work. In other words, right now, we're spending $542 million on Manningville Road, a road that's been unpaid for a long time, but there's enough people living there to support its payment. So Carter worked with some LMIG funds, but we got some Taste Bloss funding to help find that project. So another project we paid four years ago was Eastermerchi Road. We've done Cantor Road on Taste Bloss. We've done South Nick Creek on Taste Bloss. So we kind of make those lists every year and work through our road superintendent and build our road map.
Well, one final comment I want to sneak in here. The road I'm talking about is a community road that is in need by the community people. It is a road that is being used, and it is a low-cost maintenance. Well, I say my time's up, but I do have more to talk about maybe next time.
You can come out of house all day before a mile from you and we can talk it over. But there are two roads in the county that are like this, Concord, but also Rio Road in our... And Rio Road is a road that's kind of like Concord, it's just not much on it, so we haven't put the funds forward to pay it because when we first started Taste Bloss, do you know how it was costing per mile to pay a road? Would you like to estimate?
Well... Well, I'm not a road man, so you will get full guessing if you don't know what you're talking about. And I don't know what I'm talking about when it comes to, to major costs.
So when we first started T-Splosh, it was costing us about, on average now, because some roads are different. We have to mill in some areas, some areas don't. It was about a hundred eighty thousand dollars per mile. Now, I think, Carl, this running about two hundred twenty thousand dollars per mile. That's only in a five-year period, so the cost are going up on it. So we're real selective on the roads we use. We're going to have limited dollars in T-Splosh to use on those roads. So it's, it is something we look at though. We try to look at roads that are really traveled a lot.
Well, thank you, Brian. I don't want to take up more time, so.
Come by and see.
Okay.
This is with Hart at seven o'clock morning, come down here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
I, I did want to add something real quick though, because I think it's valuable to know. Carlin, what is, what does it cost per mile?
About right, about two thirty-eight, two thirty, I think two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars a mile.
Yeah, and it really was about one eighty when we started the process, correct, Carl? Some, somewhere in there.
It is, if you're just topping, it's a little cheaper, but we do milling, deep mill patching and putting down binder and topping, so the price goes up.
But the man in the middle room was so expensive over in, between Eastern and Western Merchi because it was a dirt road.
Chair, while you've got, uh, Carlin, I, I'm just curious, if, if Carlin, you, you could probably give us a ballpark idea. What has the T-Splosh done for us as far as a ballpark in your, because I mean, I know you're, as far as your miles, just to kind of give us an idea of how, how it has worked for us.
You want to come to the podium, please?
Please.
Alright, so I'm working off memory here.
Yeah, yeah, I just, this is, I just want people to understand that what the T-Splosh does for us.
Every dime of T-Splosh goes to asphalt, paving and road, road construction. Every dime of it, it's all accounted for. We use, uh, L-MIG funding, which is a, uh, it's a grant that comes through the state to every county in the state once a year. We get that. The last two years, we've been, uh, there's been some supplemental L-MIG. We put every, every dime of all of that, every bit of it goes into asphalt. We've paved, this particular contract is seventy-two miles. It's going to be done, um, in two years. Last year's contract, I think, was forty, fifty-two. It was fifty-two miles. The year before that was, um, I think it was a forty-mile contract. And right before Splosh, T-Splosh, right before T-Splosh, didn't do very much paving.
No.
If we do not have T-Sploshed, we're back to paving maybe five to ten miles a year.
And I think your numbers just equate, just in my head, that equated to close to a couple, a couple of hundred miles.
I think we've done roughly two hundred.
Very close to two hundred miles that that's done for us at the cost that you, that Brian was mentioning. From a hundred and something per mile to now a quarter of a million dollars per mile.
Right. We have run into a road or two that's gotten close to three hundred thousand mile due to deep mill patching, binder, uh, and, um, leveling and topping and then the striping, so. And we also use a portion of our Splosh money. Like what comes to the road department, that gets broke up. Some of that's infrastructure projects. Some of that money goes into asphalt. Um, so yeah, roughly two hundred miles in the last maybe eight years, I think.
So one thing, let's clarify what L-MIG is.
Local, um,
I was trying to remember.
Uh, it, everything's acronymed with G-dots.
I think the last, the last word is grant though, right?
It is. It, it's, uh, local, local something. I, I'd have It is paving. It is paving. That's how I, it's paving. So the L-MIG grant is, um, it, it's all, we use every bit of it for asphalt.
And it's about one point five million we're using that?
About one point five, our supplemental
From state.
From G-dot, right. Um, I believe we got about, close to a million or just over a million in supplemental L-MIG. And there's two more, um, off-system safety programs that they're running through, that G-dot is running through L-MIG. I'm in the wheelhouse of creating those projects that, that will work for that. There, uh, one of them is in the five hundred thousand dollar range and I think one's kind of small. It's around three hundred. Hoping to do striping and RPMs with that.
So a great, great explanation of, the, with L-MIG, a million bucks is four miles. So, I, so the bulk of our paving, our paving pretty much in general is the T-Splosh. So that's it. Just wanted to make that point, that, that, and appreciate the, the great job that y'all do stretching it as far as you can, okay? So, I, I just wanted to clarify for us.
And we do competitively bid every year.
Every year. Carl puts out competitive bidding and, uh, we, whoever we can get the best bang for the buck, where we go, so.
Uh, and almost done with, uh, I know a lot of people have called about Oakton Road and Manning Mill. Those have been two, so Oakton Road has binder on it and Manning Mill should have be complete by the mid next week.
They're about halfway to the top of the day.
Right.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Carl, local maintenance and improvement.
Yeah, local maintenance and improvement.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah.
Bobby's our second charge of the road group. We appreciate Bobby's help too, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Carl.
Alright, uh, could you continue with public comment? I'm sorry I took a little bit longer for that, but that's one topic that is important. So who, who else would like to come and talk about something? Yes, sir, please. Remember to tell us your name, correctly, um, where you live, like just the area.
My name is Ralph Harris, I live in Billingsdale. Uh, one question quick on the topic. How much money is actually brought in instead of four miles is a million dollars? Does anybody have, I know you can't tell me right now.
Yeah, I can.
But with the one percent
What the T-Splosh, brother?
And, and the one percent, all that.
Do you have a question?
I've got it, but I'm Seven and a half million a year, I think.
Ma'am, can you, can I reclaim my time? Thank you.
Uh, seven point two million a year on average.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, next question, um, this gentleman back here, the new hire for the county, was his qualifications.
Mr. Lewis? I'd be happy to give you his resume, I don't have it on me, but
Okay, cause I, I think the last time, uh, with the vehicles, the fire engine and all that, truck and all that stuff, said the person wasn't qualified. So you didn't mention any of his qualifications or anything like that?
No, he was well qualified. He was well qualified.
We debated him very hard.
Okay.
Along with several other people that we interviewed.
Okay. Did, and change this up again, on the Concord Road, did y'all, did, uh, y'all receive an email from the Historical Society?
Uh, they were working on their, their project and I don't know what their project is.
John asked for thirty days.
Yeah.
To table, to table before y'all vote on it.
Yeah, it, John asked
It wasn't even a vote though, it wasn't even a item to vote on.
John just asked for thirty days before he put it on the agenda.
Did he wanted to research and just make sure from the historical aspects is what I got at? Correct.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come, yes, please come up. Tell us your name, please.
My name is Wilma Ramey. I'm a registered vote voter in Walker County. I've spent most, about fifty years of my life in Walker County, the first and the last part. But we're not through with the last part, thank God. Anyway, I'm here about the closing of the Concord Road. The historical Concord Church sits at the junction of five access roads. Concord was organized in the early eighteen forties. Early on, an annual camp meeting was formed and held yearly as the crop, crops were laid by. And any of your farmers, you know what laid by means around this time of the year. You lay by the plowing and you wait for the, um, harvest. So in that period of time, they would have these camp meetings and there were three in Walker County. But mainly, the one we're talking about was the one that was held at Concord. Uh, people came from miles around, from Rome, Summerbowl Tribe, Dalton, Recicca, Calhoun, and points in Alabama and Tennessee to attend these meetings. The crowds came from, um, all these places, from fifteen hundred upwards to two, two thousand people came and spent at least a week, uh, camping and worshiping God at these camp meetings in the eighteen hundreds. Um, everyone who came was made welcome. A two-story structure was erected on Concord property as sleeping quarters for many. Others had brush arbors and tents and there was a brush arbor for the, uh, for services a day. Uh, the building, the, uh, two-structure building, I believe that it, I don't have the documentation, but I believe that it was used as a hospital in the American Civil War in the eighteen sixties. The, the, during that period of time, the, um, camp meetings were terminated until sometime after and they came back, um, later on, but not as well attended. April first nineteen forty-three, I was born in a farmhouse three miles from Concord. Concord was my church home for many, many years. It was the fundamental basis of my faith, uh, beliefs and faith. At least seven generations of my family have been a part of the Concord Church. At least twenty-three mem, uh, family members are interred in the Concord Cemetery. If you want to read more about the, uh, camp meetings, um, there's a, a great article in the James Alfred Sartain History of Walker County, um, about the camp meetings and it's very informative and, and, uh, interesting to read. My daddy got his early education under the teaching of Henry Shaahan in Concord School. And the Concord School reunion was held yearly until about two thousand fifteen or sixteen, somewhere along in there. And there was only three living members that attended the Concord School, which I think was like maybe nineteen twenty, it was disbanded as a school. In twenty nineteen, the North Georgia Methodist Conference elected to close this historic landmark. Many with ties to the church fought hard to obtain the rights to the building, the grounds, and the cemetery. Working diligently, a committee was formed to pursue and attain the necessary legalities to form the Concord Cemetery Association, securing and preserving the historic significance of the effect of, uh, that Concord has had on the growth of Walker County through the years. Since the, uh, association was formed, we have had a wedding and recently, a funeral was held in the church building that housed over two, uh, over a hundred people came to that funeral. So it is a, a dear place for people. Uh, it greets my very soul that a question has even been raised about the closing of one of those access roads to Concord. For monetary concerns, from an outside Walker County group, no less. Walker County voters have long memories and we will certainly remember if you vote to close a county road that has been traveled for almost two hundred years. We ask you to vote no to closing Concord Road forever. Thank you for your, um, your time. I would like to give this to the, um, it's a copy from the Walker, uh, Walker County history about the camp meeting, if, if you could please.
Could you please, yeah, give it to our county clerk, for our records? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come to the podium and speak on a new subject? Anyone else? Alright. We'll move on then to the next section, which is consent agenda. This is the section that is allowed by special rule of order providing for non-controversial matters to be considered in gross or without debate or amendment. Should a board member object to any item being in the consent agenda, it is restored, it can be restored to the place it would have otherwise been considered on the regular agenda. Does any of the board have any concern or wish to remove any item from this, the four items on this consent agenda list? No? Okay. So we will do in gross fourteen one, fourteen two, fourteen three, fourteen four. So I will ask for a motion from the board to approve these four items under the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, I second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, is there any other discussions, other discussion for these items? Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Alright, these four items in consent agenda all are approved as written. Thank you, guys. Now we'll move to new business. The first, um, well, the first four, I think is, we're gonna have Christian come back up, Mr. CFO. We're gonna talk about fifteen one first, which is Resolution R dash zero five two dash two five to adopt a general fund budget for fiscal twenty twenty-six. This is for the board to approve or to do something else.
Yeah, so, um, this resolution is to approve the general fund revenue and expenditures both at thirty, um, sorry, thirty-seven point two five million. Y'all have any questions, Chris?
Any questions about the budget? Alright, are we ready to vote? Are we ready to, uh, well, let me start over. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Whitemore. Is there a second?
Hi, Jim, real quick, can we get Paul to order in the room here?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, can we please have order in the room? We are having a hard time concentrating on our work up here. Thank you very much. So I have a motion to approve by Mr. Whitemore. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the FY twenty twenty-six budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No, it is approved. Alright. Fifteen dash two, I'm sorry, fifteen dot two, Resolution R dash zero five three dash two five to adopt an enterprise funds and special revenue budget for fiscal twenty twenty-six. Christian, will you tell us about that?
Yeah, so this is the, the special revenue funds are, uh, funds that are restricted. The revenue comes in and we have to spend it on a, a certain item. Uh, there are multiple special revenue funds, um, and then we also have an enterprise, three enterprise funds. Uh, I could go through the list if you want, or we just?
Um, is, you can list the three.
The three enterprise funds are, uh, the landfill, transit, and then our mountain co-farms.
Alright. Those are the only entities in our organization that actually are supposed to make money.
Mm-hmm. They're supposed to operate like businesses.
Yes. So do I have a motion from the board on this resolution for the special revenue budget? Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. It's a unanimous aye and we have passed that, that budget too. So thank you, Christian. Okay. So now we move to fifteen dot three. This one is also a financial item, Resolution R dash zero five four dash two five to increase the capitalization threshold for both government and business-type activities to fifteen thousand dollars. Where are we on it today and why are we wanting to move it?
Okay, so, uh, currently, um, we are at five thousand for governmental activities and five hundred for business-top activities. So the three, uh, business-top activities are at five hundred that I listed before. Um, this, after talking with Greg, the, uh, prior CFO and, uh, our audit firm, they both believe that the last time this was updated was when it was established that we had to have these in nineteen ninety-nine with GASB thirty-four. So, uh, basically what this is, is this is the value when we purchase an asset that we have to account for it as an asset on our balance sheet and depreciate it. So I, I think that with inflation, uh, fifteen thousand is a lot better for, um, operations and not, you know, more up-to-date. So I would like to increase this threshold.
So is there a motion from the board, please?
Motion to approve.
We can do discussion, motion to approve, Mr. Whitemore? Is there a second motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Discussion, Mr. Hart?
I have a question and I know already, you know, you are, so this is in line with what the counties are doing now.
Yes. Yes, so, uh, Whitfield and Catoosa are both at fifteen thousand dollars.
Very good, that, that was my
Is there any state law requiring minimum requirements on that?
Um, yeah, I think GASB thirty-four, it's an accounting standard and it is required that we have to set a minimum for those. And that's why we set the five thousand back in nineteen ninety-nine.
So this resets the minimum for GASB?
Yes.
For our accounting?
And, and no assets that are between five thousand and fifteen thousand will be removed from our balance sheet. It'll just be, any new additions, uh, will be put on there and depreciated.
It's something like what we would purchase is like a chair or a desk or something like that, right?
Yeah, so if we purchase a desk, or like a, a pretty, I, I'm not really sure the price is, but let's say the desk is five thousand and two hundred dollars. We have to, uh, put that on our books and we have to keep it for four years, track it, depreciate it, and it's just a, a headache for, you know, back in nineteen ninety-nine, a car was five thousand dollars brand-new. So, um, that's, that's really the goal of it. I don't think it's to
Any further discussion by the board? Okay, I'll, I'll, do I have, yes, I have a motion from Mr. Whitemore and Mr. Wilson. Okay, thank you. So, eh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Alright, unanimous to approve that one as well. Thank you. And one more for Christian to say for, uh, Mr. And one more for Christian to say for, uh, Mr. Resolution R dash zero five, oh, I'm sorry, let me start. Resolution R dash zero five-five dash two-five to authorize the chairwoman to execute documents relating to financing the fire apparatus. Last month, the board approved the purchase of a new ladder truck for the fire department. And now Christian is going to explain to you how we came to, uh, the decision on the best choice for us.
So we, uh, asked multiple people or, uh, institutions what rate we could give. We, uh, asked the seller. We had Baker LeFait reach out and they were probably the best, or they were the best. Um, they offered us a two-point-seven-five interest rate, uh, for five years, um, for one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is exactly what we need. We'll pay on it monthly, um, and I think that's the best, uh, course of action. I don't think we should pay for it, uh, all upfront because we can make more in interest than two-point-seven-five, so.
Um, do I have a motion from the board so we can get to discussion if we need it?
I'll make a motion. We, we, uh, approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Askew, is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Whitemore? Now discussion. Anyone have any questions for the process we undertook or where we came to the conclusion? Okay, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right. So moved. Thank you, Christian. Let's just sit down for a minute. Next, I'm gonna call Payne Gilli, our director of the landfill. He is going to talk about resolution R dash zero five-six dash two-five to allocate funds for sediment remediation associated with the former Coats America plant. Mr. Payne, may I get away?
Good evening, everybody. Um, this, uh, the purpose of this request is to move the site towards, uh, compliance on the state level and to eliminate the, the federal cleanup requirements at the site. Y'all are aware of the PCB spill that occurred in two thousand and eighteen. Um, hopefully this work will get us out of that federal program to where we can just focus on the, uh, the state level, pro- the state program. This, uh, this work involves, uh, over excavating sediments out of the wet weather conveyance along Maple Street and then going north on Williams about five hundred and fifty feet. We'll cross the road at Souza, uh, which will, you know, put us on the east side of, of, uh, Williams and continue down to just beyond a, uh, utility entrance on the site. Um, this, hopefully this will also free up two parcels of the five parcel complex where, um, they would be, um, independent, standalone. And then this would, this would put the focus just on the two sites, uh, that, uh, make up the hazardous site inventory, so.
So that, when you say, um, take those two parcels out of that?
Should take it out of that program, yes.
We should be able to sell those two parcels then?
Yes. Yes. That's the plan, yes. So, or that's the goal. So the, um, the other, the other part of all this is that in October, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, there was a soil remediation plan submitted to the, um, to the Georgia EPD. And, uh, in a, in June of this year, they basically approved that a plan, that plan. So this is part of that work plan that was submitted. And these costs will actually come out of the cost for that overall work plan.
Is there any questions from the board from Mr. Payne?
Yes, how, how long will this process take from start to finish?
Okay, uh, this, this phase, we're currently working, we've been working on this for probably a month now to get, uh, access, um, from adjacent property owners, that sort of thing. Once we actually go into the field and do the work, which will, uh, involves over exhuming at those dishes. And there's also cleaning out part of the stormwater drain. Probably about two to three weeks. And then beyond, beyond that, there will be about thirty to forty-five days reporting. Time to prepare the report, uh, for the EPD and EPA. And, uh, after that, it just depends on the EPA's timeframe on responding to us.
Is it EPA-driven approval or EPD-driven approval?
Actually, it's both. Yes. Yeah, we're, the, the EP, EPD appro- the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, the EPD approved the work plan. Um, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, has agreed to this work to clean up the PCB spill. Basically, the PCB spill went into an area where there was other contamination.
So, and I ran through this, so when we get this work done, we send the samples off. If the samples come back and say they go deeper than this hundred thousand, we're not covering the deal.
It's possible, yeah. We did do some preliminary sampling about, uh, a month ago and the results were, were favorable. They looked good.
So you're pretty confident, I'm looking at a hundred percent confidence. You're pretty confident that this hundred thousand will get us to the bottom of the problem?
Hopefully, yes. Yes. Yeah, I'd say I'm fair, I'm confident. Well, you know, it's, uh, it's complicated. We won't know until we get out there. But we've done soil borings along the wet weather conveyances. We've gone out, we've re-sampled recently.
Yes.
And it looks really good. It's favorable.
That's good. And you think the work will be done in, you said, two to three weeks? Is there any way to put a number on when the EPD, EPA will give their blessing if the tests come back good?
Depends on, it depends on how much I press them, you know?
I know you can't, but.
We're in a voluntary program. Um, we basically said when the spill occurred that we would clean this up in our own time. Okay, um, we've moved forward, uh, at a quicker pace since January than, you know, since two thousand and eighteen. So I think that we'll get a response quicker than, say, in the past.
Any other questions for Mr. Payne?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Whitemore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, Mr. Askew.
I do have one question.
Oh, second.
So the hundred thousand, do you have to bid that out or certain firm that asks you to come in and clean this up? How's that gonna happen? Like, what are you doing with?
Well, we're, we're, it's, we're using the, the consultant that's been with us all along. They've done good work for us, great work for us. Uh, their prices are reasonable. Um, you know, we, we, we feel like there's no need to change horses midstream.
No, no, this is, most of them have had the call questions and stuff. I saw that, I was just seeing, that's a move, motion to approve. Thank you.
So good, Mr. Wilson. Okay, so I have a motion for approval from Mr. Whitemore and a second from Mr. Askew. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna ask Christian to come up again and we're gonna, he's gonna explain to us about resolution R dash zero five-seven dash two-five to amend the Walker County, Georgia, enabling legislation to modify the length of service allowed by the auditor. So the Enabling Act is what guides this, this board and how we do everything we do for the county. And in the Enabling Act is specific instructions on certain things and the auditor, how we hire them and how long they work for us is in that Enabling Act. So I'll let Christian finish from there. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, the counties around us, we'll start with that, uh, do not have any restrictions on, uh, audit firms staying around. Not, you know, replacing audit firms every four years is a little excessive, in my opinion. Uh, we, I have contacted, uh, Rushton and myself. They're an audit firm that we use here in Walker County and they were the audit firm that I used in Whitfield when I worked there. Um, they're fantastic auditors. Um, they are at their term limit with us. So if we do not get this Enabling Act passed, we'll have to get new auditors. When a new audit firm comes in to start auditing, they have to tie down the prior year and do the current year that we're, uh, just finished up. So that requires them to do two audits, which is more expensive for us. And then we have to repeat that process in four years. So that, that isn't very cost-effective, in my opinion. So I think that this should be changed, um, and removed completely.
Okay. Are there any questions for Christian from the board?
Yeah, as we were discussing this, what they, you and I talked about is that audit, they would change principles that reward you.
Yes, so there's about eight to seven auditors that come at once. And so, uh, they have an audit manager. They usually rotate every four to six years. Uh, it's usually somebody different. Um, so I don't think we'll ever have an issue of dealing with the same person, multiple, you know? And there's a lot of people and they have, they're a prestigious firm and they don't want to ruin their reputation. So it's not like a buddy-buddy situation or anything like that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're right, because, you know, I, I do think they did a very good job. And I think it's important to put a different set of eyes on it. Every couple of years, give it a different order, every couple of things, yeah. I think that's important, we should keep doing that.
I would like, uh, just, just, uh, because you mentioned the enabling legislation. And, uh, and this is a perfect opportunity to explain to, you know, just to, to, to point out the, uh, ability to change that through home rule that we've talked about in other meetings that we have, through legislation, we have that ability to, to change certain things in that enabling documentation without having to go back to legislation. And this is something that fits in those confines.
That's correct, yes.
And I can go through that process a little bit more. Uh, we.
If you want.
We have to present this at this meeting and the next, get it approved both meetings, then get the minutes approved, send them to the state before it's changed. So, um, it's a pretty lengthy process and it, it, you know, it's very cautious and, you know, not, not some, somebody can just do and then it's done.
So the state law, have anything in the state law requiring us to change any kind of audit firms?
No.
Every so many years?
No.
Nothing like that?
No.
No other counties change audit firms?
The, the counties that I've reached out to do not change principles. They don't change audit firms.
I mean, they still, I'm sure, like, everything has to be set to the Secretary of State, correct? Is that my understanding?
For the.
Their audit, don't they have to send?
Yes, yeah.
Put their audit from Walker County has to be set to the state anyway, so.
So it goes to the Department of Audit, uh, Accounting and Audits, the DCA, and a bunch of other state, uh, organizations. So it is, it is, uh, checked thoroughly. And.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Uh, sorry, uh, I want to try to, uh, better our act for, which is our annual financial report. And I know this firm can and it can be award-winning if, uh, get, if we can keep Rushton and I can start working on it and get it better.
So our county could be recognized at state level or is that federal?
It's federal. It's the Georgia, uh, Government Finance Officers Association.
Your votes. All right, uh, any other questions for Mr. to approve? Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wilson, second?
Say.
Mr. Whitemore? No other discussion necessary?
So we will vote this time and then it'll have to be on the next.
You'll actually hear it three times. You'll vote this time, vote in September, and then hear it again in October when we approve the minutes from the September.
Okay.
Well, the two, two votes today and September, that's great. All right, um, then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, so moved. Thank you, Christian, again. Let me see where I am. Let's see, we removed fifteen-seven and fifteen-eight. Those were the two squashed top items, so we removed those. Now we are at fifteen point nine on our list that is consideration of proposal for disposal of organic waste at the Walker County landfill. So I'm gonna bring Payne back up to tell us about that.
Hello again. So, um, each year, well, this, this is, um, well, at the landfill, we, we, we take in trees and shrubs throughout the year. And then one time a year, we will grind that material up and that provides our, our mulch or our, our fuel chips that we sell to a, a factory, a recycling facility, West Rock in Stevenson, Alabama. And we'll, we'll truck maybe one to three loads. In fact, this week, we're getting four loads to them. Um, and we sell those chips to them, so it's one of our red revenue streams. So that process also enhances our recycling program as well. So we, um, we, we were using Big Woody's out of Chattanooga. Uh, between two thousand seventeen and two thousand and, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, we collected some bids from other firms. And, uh, a company out of Athens, Georgia, uh, won the bid, Topo Industries. And they came in, they did the work in about two weeks and they were gone. So this year, we collected prices from Big Woody's and from Topo again. And, um, the Big Wood, the Big Woody's price was forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five and Topo came in at forty-five, two fifty. So I'd like to, um, you know, give Topo the work, let them mobilize here and get this stuff ground up for us as quickly as possible. Uh, they do a good job for us and, um, and would like to, like to use them again this year.
Are there any questions from the board? All right, then is there a motion from the board?
Make a motion. We, uh, accept Payne's, uh, recommendation.
Is there a second? Thank you. And is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, so moved.
Can I say?
Industry is your, I'm sorry?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to let everybody know that this is a budgeted item. So, you know, at the, at the end of the year, we calculate how many tons we, we took in and, and then we, we look at, we project into the following year and we establish a number, you know, that we use and this, this number came well within that, so it's a real positive.
Thank you for that.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to another item that is over my limit, to Payne's point. This is when, my, my threshold, my authority level is twenty-five thousand dollars. So anything that we do over twenty-five has to come before the board for discussion. So this one is, uh, purchase order twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 twenty-three twenty-one to UniFirst, who is our AED device facility, uh, maintenance crew. They changed out our emergency equipment for, I think it's, uh, heart attacks and so that someone's having an issue with one of our buildings, we are, we have some, wait, just try to say. This, the price on this, we changed, we noted earlier that this, it's not correct as written because we noted just a few minutes before the board meeting started that the UniFirst invoice contains a sales tax amount and the government does not pay sales tax. So we have to go back to UniFirst to make them redo the invoice to reduce or to remove the sales tax. So the real price will be thirty-six thousand, five dollars. So I'm asking the board to approve this. I'll make the motion for approval of the thirty-six thousand dollars. Let me get a second and then we'll discuss.
Say.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hart?
I think there's two things you're supposed to be on that. The thirty-six thousand and five is for the one bill for UniFirst, but spacing off of that. There's another invoice there for the Sheriff Department for one fifty-seven twenty-eight.
Yes, sir, that's under my limits, so I didn't bring that up.
Okay, they were both together on?
Yeah, the, the council table department pays them together.
Okay.
The other one wasn't a question.
Okay, understood. So, so then, I, I see what you're saying.
Okay, thank you, though, for telling that out. Because that was part of the packet. I'm not sure it needed to be, but because the end of the payment will include both of those charges.
I understand.
Yeah, looked like it needed to be there, but we're only talking about the one that's over my limit, which is, thank you. All right, I got a motion from, who made the motion from? I made a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Give me a second. Thank you. Thank you. I love my board. Um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, it is approved for the UniFirst invoice. All right, we are at the end where we get to hear from the commissioners and their comments. Oh, I apologize. Fifteen eleven, yes, Mr. Tucker, who's waited patiently all night long to get this. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Okay, so we are gonna vote on this now. So to be clear, the zoning claim commission recommended that the rezone happen with the condition that he moves to a CN, which is commercial neighborhood, from the current R-three residential. So Jeff Tucker requests a rezone from R-three residential to CN, commercial neighborhood for property located at fourteen twenty-three Happy Valley Road, Rossville, Georgia, three oh seven four one, tax map and parcel number zero dash one three five dash zero eight zero. Do I have a motion from the board, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Whitemore. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Whitemore, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. Hart, thank you. Any discussion about this item? All right, so, sorry.
Just, just, since the planning commission recommended, will approve conditions.
That's the CN. Do you originally...
The CN is in a sleep one.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, it doesn't make, yeah, just, normally if it says planning commission approve the conditions, that's outstanding condition like privacy fence or da-da-da or da-da-da, so that's what I was trying to understand, why it's on there with it. Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve to go to CN, not sleep one.
Okay, great, and I have a second from Mr. Hart? Okay, any other discussion? Thank you for clarifying that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, thank you, so it's so passed. Mr. Tucker, you have your, your approval. Okay, now we can go on to commissioner comments. Mr. Whitemore, you want to go first?
Just appreciate everybody coming out, thank you all employees and first responders for all your hard work.
Mr. Askew?
Oh, yes, same, you know, like I said, our boys do work very hard. We got a little lesson on our T-Spot tonight, and that was very, very helpful so everybody out there could understand how important that is when it does come around. And as, as Chairwoman Teague stated earlier, all of our schools, I guess, just about their back in session, there may be one or two that are, I'm not sure, but as far as the community as a whole, our schools are back in session, and, and like I said, we're not used to it for a little while, so please, you know, be vigilant. We don't want any accidents with any children. Outside of that, like I said, thank you for your attendance, we appreciate your input. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
So a couple of positive things to point out, so Payne has been, Payne and Carl and Bobby have done a great thing with one of our schools in our town, the Channing Valley Middle School, they've made some money for them for agriculture, and raised beds, I believe, I think. So that, that's a very positive thing, thank you Bobby, Carl, Payne for doing that, that's something we can do, and help our, our friends in the camp. Carl and Bobby, thank y'all for the work on Man and Mill Road, people are just super excited about that. One of the residents there, they're asking me to say when y'all are going to speed let it sound. People speeding on our new road. But yeah, it looks great, it's a long time over to do some of that, especially the long work securing the funding for that, he worked really hard on that, so glad to see that. And last thing, Sarah, we have, Sarah and I and John have been working pretty hard on a, on a project at the Ag Center. We've worked with all the groups that use the Ag Center, the county agents, the young farmer people, the four Hs, and the beekeeper, everybody, we had several meetings, but what we want to do with some of that 2020 SPO dollars is to build a storage facility there, we've got plans out for that. Joe and John and I are meeting next week to put that bid process together. It was certainly worth everybody in the county who was a contractor that handled with a bid, I'll have to take a look at it, and that information will be out soon, we'll let y'all know when that is, I'm really excited about getting that done, and that'll come close to finishing out the $600,000 that we had allocated for that portion of the 2020 SPO, so. Again, big thanks to everybody involved in that, looking forward to seeing it happen, gee.
Excited to announce that the bids went out this week, it is posted on the Walker County website, the heat for fire station will be getting built out. Hopefully, we will have the bids and be voting on the proposals to build it out in our September meeting, so anybody who wants the bids, get on the website, pull the documents, reach out to John, Marshall, John, Chief Lodge, myself, we, we tried to, they've worked very diligently to get this moving. I know it's been a long outstanding building that has nothing been done for, when was it built, somebody tell me that exact, is it 15, it's 15 years? What? So, but it will hopefully be a full functioning, built-out fire station soon. So that is, it is on the website, if you want to get on it, and hopefully a perfect bid in September.
Okay, all right, well, with that, we thank y'all for coming, and we are adjourned.